Hi and welcome to this special edition of Newsmakers TV. I'm your host, Jerry Roberts. Tonight, a roundtable conversation with four candidates for the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board of Education, also known as the School Board. There are five members who sit on the School Board, and in the November 6 election, two of those seats will be on the ballot. There are eight candidates running for the two seats, and in this edition, we'll meet four of them. You got all that? Good. There's a quiz after the show. We'll be speaking with the four other contenders in a separate program. Joining us now, in alphabetical order, and according to their identifications on the ballot, are Mark Alvarado, government administrator and parent; Kate Ford, educator and superintendent; Rose Munoz, a social worker and parent; and on the phone from Los Angeles, Ismael Uyoa, listed as educator and nonprofit board member. Welcome to y'all, and thanks for coming. Mark, let me start with you. The bylaws of the School Board say members are elected for this purpose: "to provide leadership and citizen oversight of district operations to ensure compliance with the law and relevant public policies," which is a sweeping statement, but pretty general. Let me ask you to be very specific. Within those parameters, what do you want to do on the Board? What's the specific priority you want to be able to point to at the end of your term and say you've accomplished?
I've got multiple responses for that. Number one is leadership. Number two is accountability. And number three would be transparency. I think those are three main values that I want to bring to the Board.
Kate?
Well, first of all, I actually just want the Board to do its job. And I think that that means that a Board has to be extremely knowledgeable, has to be great communicators, has to be willing to ask difficult questions, and expect very honest, real answers, can't be status quo, and can't just be a rubber-stamp kind of a Board. And the bottom line is that the Board is responsible for the supervision and support and evaluation of the superintendent. And I don't shy away from doing that.
All right, we'll get to the superintendent in a bit. Rose, top priorities?
Yes, my top priority is to have good fiscal accountability and transparency as a Board, and also to enhance education for all students, for them to have a safe and inclusive environment in which to learn.
Okay. Ish, on the phone, we should point out that you're actually the only incumbent who's running. You were appointed to the Board by your colleagues, I guess, back in 2017. What's the main thing, the specific priority, you want to point to when your term's up?
I want to see that our parents are able to engage with our schools, feel more welcome, so that they're part of their child's educational journey. And I think there's some things that we're doing well, but that we need to continue working on, to make sure that our parents feel like they are connected to our schools, because our teachers and our administrators can't be expected to do all the work themselves and not give the parents some sort of guidepost or keep them in the conversation. In fact, along with that, also increase the safety, and I think we, as a Board, have started going that way, and I hope to continue going that way as well.
Okay. All right, we're gonna just go down the line and rotating who gets to answer first here. Kate, your personal experience, what, in your personal experience qualifies you for this position? How involved have you been with the district, with education issues, and from what perspective?
Well, I think, as you know, I have over 40 years of experience as an educator. In fact, my whole professional life has been dedicated to education. And so I was a teacher for over 13 years, a principal for over 20 years, and now a superintendent. I'm retiring from public education.
We should point out, that's in Los Angeles, not here in San Barbara.
That's in LA, that's right.
We have a different superintendent.
That's correct, you do. But those all are different roles that have really prepared me well for this job. In addition, in education, I've sat on a number of Boards, so I really understand the role of public Boards and the role of Board members. And more than anything, though, I think that I look so keenly on and rely so much on what I learned as a teacher, about building relationships, about being a team player, about being a collaborator, being knowledgeable, hardworking. These are all things teachers have to do, and I feel like I took them everywhere I went and in every job, and I want to do the same as a Board member.
Okay. All right, Rose, in terms of your experience and background, what qualifies you for this position?
Yes, what qualifies me for the position is that I volunteered while my daughters were in school. I was very involved with the PTA, and also volunteered in the classrooms. I've also worked in the classrooms at the schools. And I'm also, I'm a social worker by training. I have my master's in social work, so I've studied, you know, policy, planning, and administration. And in my profession, I've been to the schools to see students there, spoken with the teachers, spoken with the staff, and also with the parents. And that, you know, that qualifies me to be a School Board member.
Okay, thanks. Ish, tell us a little bit about your background and how it relates to being elected to the School Board.
Absolutely. So first and foremost, I'm the product of Santa Barbara Unified School District. You know, local born and raised, grew up, first-generation low-income students. I've seen a lot of the different trials and hardships that our students go through when equity really isn't put as a priority. I spent the last 10 years working with youth in our college and career readiness. I worked two years in the county, helping students get vital job skills that they needed to be able to enter the job market. The last eight years, I've been working with students locally versus the council director for five years, working with first-generation low-income students in our junior highs and high schools to make college a reality for themselves, and also bringing those parents, their parents into the conversation. The last three years, I've been working at Santa Barbara City College as an advisor, so working with those same students that I was working at council, to get them to transfer so they can go on to get their BA, their masters, a doctorate. And that's just my professional. I've also been on the FLA Board for the last four years. I'm on the grant-making committee for the Fund for Santa Barbara, helping create different opportunities for all our populations here locally in Santa Barbara County, including Santa Barbara, Gualita.
All right.
Which is where our district sits.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Well, seven generations Santa Barbaraan, have over 30 years of experience in government administration, as well as working in nonprofit organization. A lot of my work is in community and human development, so I've worked a lot in low-income neighborhoods. I've had to work with Boards at the county level, at the city level. I've sat on many Boards myself, nationally, internationally, locally, serving predominantly low to moderate-income families, Latino families. And really, I just feel like I'm a voice for the community. My record stands as the much work that we've done in this community, serving low-income people, as well as community-based education programs. So I feel I'm well qualified for the position.
All right, thanks. All right, Rose, Kate mentioned the superintendent and the importance of the Board in overseeing the superintendent, hiring and firing power, obviously. So the bylaws say employing the superintendent and setting policy for hiring of other personnel is one of the top roles of a Board member. What's your assessment of how Superintendent Kerry Matruoco is doing? On a scale of A for excellent, F for failing, as long as we're talking about schools, what grade would you give him?
Right, the grade that I would give him would actually be based on, you know, an analysis of how the whole, the school district as a whole has been doing. I think that there's some things that could be done better at the school district in terms of having more inclusiveness with the students, as Mark mentioned, you know, of lower income, people of color, you know, special needs children, and Latino children, including also the LGBTQ, you know, community, the students and their families. I think that my motivation to be on the School Board comes from, if it was, I'd say, like, a C at this point, you know, that we can do better. And in terms of, you know, the past few years, just looking back, and I'm also very forward-looking. So, you know, this is what we're looking at, so how can we make an improvement, would be my outlook on that.
Okay. Ish, you've worked closely with the superintendent now as an appointed Board member. What do you give him? A, B, C, D, F?
I'm pretty hard-grader, so I think I'd have to give Kerry a B. I think he's been able to come into the district and put things face front that other superintendents or other administrators and paths might have just ignored. For instance, when he walked in, he recognized the identification of our students in his special ed. I mean, that right there is a huge detriment to our students, so being able to identify that and start working with our cabinet and our teachers and our administrators to be able to reverse those categorizations, those identifications, so that the students are getting the appropriate help they need to become English learners, has been huge. And then also, as you talk about hiring, you know, that's our job, it's important. He's been able to streamline a lot of the hiring practices that we have, so now the administrators I've been speaking to, you know, are happy that we're actually hiring on folks earlier and earlier than we used to, so that we can actually start the school year with the appropriate amount of stuff that we need. Does it mean that he does everything perfectly? Absolutely not. He's not a perfect human being, and there's things that he and I go back and forth on and that we don't see at all. But, you know, for the most part, I would say he's doing a good job. Again, there's some things that we probably have to push him more on, that we do have to push him more on.
All right.
And that's why I'm pushing him on, to make sure that the school district continues to get better and better.
All right, tell me, I should know this, and I'm not sure. How, he's on a three-year contract, correct?
He's on a three-year contract, and so his evaluation comes up, we do annual evaluations, and if the evaluation is favorable, then there's an option to extend.
And he's got, he's got a year left on that?
No, he's actually got two years, because we extended him last year.
Oh, you did? Okay, all right. Mark, what grade would you give him? You think it was a good idea to extend him, the way the Board did?
Well, at this point, I'd give him an incomplete, because I feel that there's been decisions and work that still needs to be answered to the public, and as well as decisions and work going forward. So until I'm on the Board to do a full analysis and evaluation of his performance, I'd have to give him an incomplete at this point.
All right. Kate, you've been a superintendent. You've obviously watched the Board. What do you think?
Well, if you'll indulge me, I probably wouldn't give letter grades. I would use the system we use now in the state, which is about meeting the standard, and I would say standard not met.
I'm old-school, okay? I'm old-school. Standard not met.
Standard not met. First of all, it's quite clear that there are fiscal issues in the district, concerns about the use of funds and the reserves for the stadium. The achievement level of students is not what it should be, and there isn't a real strong, in my opinion, viable plan to lessen that achievement gap that we see. And I think next week, when the scores come out from the state, we may be very disappointed with the progress that should have been made in Santa Barbara. I also think that there's a strong belief, and I've seen it, that communication is not what it should be. And also, we've talked about this in different ways, the involvement of the community is minimal, and the understanding of the community about what the Board does and what he does has been minimal. There was almost no one at the Board meeting last week. These are all things he should have done, and that's why I say standard not met.
Yeah. I think the involvement's getting a little bit more, considering we have eight people running this time.
I would agree.
Last time, we didn't have any campaign, because there were three seats and three people signed up. So I think that's a good sign for democracy. All right, Ish, this is the last, I'm gonna reference the bylaws of the Board again. Another key role is providing safe, adequate facilities that support the district's instructional program. But, you know, sadly, we have to read that in the context of the national epidemic of school shootings and other violence. What has the district done to provide safe and adequate facilities, and is it enough?
Again, so if you want to talk about as far as safety and school shootings and things like that, one of our biggest moves recently has been the hiring of Kelly Moore as our safety coordinator for the district. Eight years past, what would happen is we didn't have a coordinator. We had different school sites and administrative teams working on their own safety plan. At this point, we have somebody who's going to be able to work with all the districts, who has a background in law enforcement and safety, and who's worked through fires, floods, mud flows, different crises, that's gonna be able to bring, that is bringing his expertise to the table. He, in fact, is actually going to be bringing a report to us next Tuesday, so if y'all are interested, I would highly recommend showing up for that. As far as updating our facilities in general, we have been working on that. The INJ, oh my God, am I blanking? The funds that came through, across INJ, have actually been helping. The stadium, for instance, I don't know if you've been on the stadium track at Santa Barbara High School, but that was a complete mess. I can't tell you how many times, as a high school student myself, I wiped out on that cracked pavement. So being able to actually replace and make a stadium that is actually safe for our students, and then we're doing the same thing across the campus, across the district. Just levels high school, their classrooms get ordinarily hot, especially with the weather changes that have been so common the last few years, that we're actually putting money into creating and to convert those classrooms into something that is safer, that is more comfortable for our students, so that they don't have to be in a room that's sweltering. So we're doing that for a lot of our different facilities right now, and I'm really proud that we're using the INJ monies to be able to upgrade our facilities so our students not only have more of the state-of-the-art, but also safer facilities for students to learn.
Good enough. Mark, you have a kid in public school, do you?
Daughter.
You feel safe sending her off in the morning? And you think the district's done enough?
Well, I want to know what the plan is, first of all. I think the first thing is accountability of holding teachers, administrators, at all levels accountable around a safety plan. So what is that? You know, and is there a culture of safety really, really permeating throughout the district? And our teachers being held accountable, our principals, assistant principals, counselors, everybody being held accountable for a safety plan. In terms of the school environment, and Ish alluded to it in terms of the climate change, you know, we do need to have a 10-year plan to transform every school to be a green school, and have the proper HVAC systems, all the weatherization of the windows. If you look at the windows at Santa Barbara Junior High, they haven't been touched since I was there in 1977. And that's not acceptable. So there is a variety of different issues that the district needs to address when it comes to the health and safety of our children. So I want to know what the plan is and how we're gonna hold everybody accountable.
All right. Safety first, Kate, and then, because you mentioned the stadium, Ish was talking about measures INJ, the money there. What do you think?
Well, to your first question, I'm not sure that our schools are as safe as they should be. To me, there is, and actually, the ed code says that the number-one job that we have is to protect and to keep all of the students and staff safe. And I think in my conversations, that people would say that isn't exactly the case at every school. Some schools have a great sense of, have a great system of security, and others don't even have PA systems that work. And these days, security and safety is also taken into account with the cyber-safety of each school. I'm not sure that we have ensured that each, that the internet access and cyber-safety and security exists on every campus. And honestly, and we all know this, there are many campuses in Santa Barbara where you can just walk on the campus. I don't consider that safe. And when I was a principal at Peabody, it came up a number of times, and the community of Santa Barbara has a strong sense of love and respect for its community. Does that mean it's always safe? I'd say no.
All right, let's get Rose in on this question. What do you think about the status of safety in our school campuses?
Certainly, I think we can all agree that we want these children to be safe on our campuses. You know, that drives us, as to, I know for myself, to wanting to be a Board member. And I share the concerns, you know, as Kate explained, about the open campuses that we have, and the safety on the campuses. I think that we need to be responsive as a School Board and as a superintendent, you know, to have that dialogue with the parents, with the teachers, with the students, and with the community, as to how we can increase that safety level within our budget, and what we can, you know, look at, like which ways, what solutions are there to improve on that.
All right.
I think we all agree that we can do better, and in terms of children from, you know, kindergarten on up through high school, that we could certainly improve. And, you know, the new challenges, like the cybersecurity. As a social worker, I have worked in, like, with mental health, you know, in the mental health field, and have looked at concerns as that. And I think that's a strength that I'll bring also as a Board member.
Okay, all right. Let's go from infrastructure to what's happening in the classroom. Of course, one of the big issues, it's been at the center of debate in public schools for years, is the achievement gap. And there's a new study out yesterday that concludes in California, the achievement gap is not closing, and we lag behind most other states, almost all other states, in closing it. Mark, tell us what the achievement gap is, and how much of a problem you think it is in Santa Barbara.
Well, it's not a gap, it's a Grand Canyon, and it's appalling. And when you have almost 60% of our school population graduating non-proficient in math and English language arts, it's not acceptable, okay? And studies already show that if a kid is not reading by third grade, the chances are he might not, or she might not be able to catch up. So what's the solution? Music, 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 and more music. Studies show that if a kid has five to 12 hours of music education from pre-K to the fifth grade, he stands, and she stands a 95% chance of going to university. That's proven. The Harmony Project did that in Long Beach with three cohorts, and it's proven. We have the data. We know that music helps to shore up that gap. We need to prepare our kids for the rigor of core, of the Common Core courses, and we're not doing that. So we have to create a gate by the fourth grade. If a kid is not at level, then we need to extend the school day, year-round schooling, you know, summer school, winter programs, something. And also parental engagement is huge, especially for our Spanish-speaking families.
Yeah. And Kate, of course, there's always a racial and ethnic perspective on this, that the gap, or a-gap between Asian and white students and their Latino and African-American peers. Do you think Santa Barbara school district's doing enough in this way?
Well, obviously, they're not, because the gap exists and continues here in Santa Barbara. So it's very real. As you know, the LCFF funding actually gives a lot of extra funding to the students who...
Explain what that is.
Local Control Funding Formula, that Governor Brown took at least 10 years to try to get passed in the legislature.
2013 finally passed, right?
Yes, in 2013. And what it does is allow, there's a base rate for all of the students in the state of California, and for public funding. And then there's an additional amount of funding that goes to the students who are either second-language learners, English learners, kids of poverty, or foster youth. And then there's an additional bonus amount that is called a concentration grant, which goes to those districts that have over 55% of students. So with the LCFF funding, are we making the best use of that for the students? I don't, I don't, I don't see it. To Mark's point, absolutely. Music makes a difference. The arts make a difference in the achievement of students. But also, have we given enough focus to primary education? Because what we know is that students who don't have a great teacher or a great experience in kindergarten almost never make it up.
All right, I'm gonna double back on that question in a second. Rose, the achievement gap, is there enough being done? Is the state using those funds, I mean, is the district using those state funds properly? What's your thought on how do we close the achievement gap?
Right, I think, first of all, you know, I agree with, you know, supporting teachers in the primary grades, because they can be doing, you know, more with the students in terms of, you know, having enough support to have them progress, so that they could, you know, read, do math, and write, and those, have those strong skills. I think that what we can do is also be talking with each other rather than at each other in terms of collaborating at the School Board level, and within the schools, and with the community. You know, how can we do this better? There's nothing better than parents that have several children that have gone through the school, and what have they seen, you know, how accessible are we? How inclusive are we? So that, you know, the parents, some of us can go to meetings, you know. I know when my children were in school, I was able to be informed, I was able to be involved and be a voice, you know, there. However, parents that work second, you know, two jobs to survive in Santa Barbara, and then on top of that, have the barrier with a language or a poverty issue, you know, I think that we could be more inclusive and do better in terms of closing that achievement gap.
All right.
So that each student will have a, you know, opportunity, whether they be special needs or Latino, so that they could succeed.
Okay. Ish, Kate says that the district really isn't getting results despite the LCFF, the formula, Local Control Funding Formula. What do you see on that? What's your perspective? Do you think those scores are gonna be better or worse when they come out?
Well, they better not get worse, that's for damn sure, but we do see them going better. I don't know if you saw one of our previous meetings, but we did get, for the first time, four years consecutive information for scores for LCFF. Yes, the numbers were really low, unfortunately, but we did see an overall upward trend. Right now, one of our main priorities is really upping English language arts, because the literacy piece is gonna be really important, is integral to all the other core subjects. As far as arts and music, that is something that Santa Barbara has put a lot of money and time into, and a lot of effort into for the last 10 years. Every student in our primary grades get music education. So we want to continue doing that. Unfortunately, the junior high grades is where we're suffering a little bit, so we're looking at it as a district. I'm looking, I'm talking to different community members involved in visual and performing arts, to see how we can entice students to sign up more. One of the biggest issues has been under Common Core is the increased emphasis on non-VAPA subjects. So unfortunately, it's been eating away at more space. But that's something else that I've been talking to our leadership about, about how can we arrange the schedule, how can we make differences in our junior high grades, so that our students can get more time, so that they are not taking just the core subjects, and they can't take an art of music or a sport if they want to, because that is important. Having, being able to get stimulated on different sides of your brain and making sure that education and learning is happening different ways, absolutely. Are we where we want to be? Absolutely not. And I definitely want to see that gap closed, and it's gonna take a lot of, unfortunately, it's not something that's gonna happen between now and tomorrow. And also disgracefully, statistically, we're right on par with so many other districts and so many other states, which is the sad truth, but I know that if we work together here at Santa Barbara Unified, with our partners, streamlining and really pushing our community partners to do the best work and evaluating all the work that we're doing ourselves and with our community partners, we're gonna start closing that gap more.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, jump in.
Just yesterday, I was reading this great article about some small cities in the East Coast that are actually making it a city issue, the achievement gap. It's not just the schools, it's not just the classroom teacher, but the city council is working with the School Board and actually creating a whole-city plan to address the achievement gap. And to me, Santa Barbara's the kind of city that could actually do that. We're small, and we have just an abundance of people who are generous with their time and their resources, and what they know and what they can do. And I think whether it means every student who's below grade level has an individual learning plan, and every student has a mentor, I just think there are many ways to address this. We just haven't been creative or bold enough to try.
What do you think of that idea, Ish?
I would let you. I've been advocating for more partnerships with the various boards, not just limited to cities, but also really to unify, because a lot of their, but face it, all their students come through us anyway. Same thing with Montecito, Clough Springs. There has to be a larger breadth of work, not just, you know, Santa Barbara Unified working in Santa Barbara Unified, but how do we partner up? How do we share best practices? I'd love to see the information on those East Coast schools, to see what, you know, how can we create those partnerships here in Santa Barbara. But again, it's, you know, if we have those models, let's go out. And I think right now, we have a really strong cabinet that is really evidence-based driven and really looking for those practices, so we can improve, you know, as much as we can the achievement of our students kind of as well.
All right. Kate, you jumped in there, so I'm gonna give this question to Rose. So there's the new research I was talking about, about the achievement gap. There's also one of the big conclusions, and you both have mentioned it, is that public school kids, a lot of them fall behind before they even start school. school kids, a lot of them fall behind before they even start school, and they never, they catch up. And those who tend to be least prepared for school at kindergarten level are low-income Latino and Black students, including recent immigrants and those in foster care. Given the budget constraints in the district, what, if anything, can be do, that can be done that's not being done already to ensure that kids are prepared when they show up for kindergarten?
Yes, I think the best collaboration that we can do, you know, I'm actively involved with tenants' rights here in Santa Barbara, with the immigration issues, and with community safety and safety at the schools. So I think that the best support that we give the parents that are sending their children to school, and also the assessment of the children themselves, you know, there is the mental health services that are being provided to the children, and, and the risk assessments that are done. And so how to bring that in, in terms of, you know, that child, what other barriers to learning does, do the children have? And so I think that the best that we can do in terms of collaborating, you know, speaking with each other and helping the children so that they will have the best chance at success is very key. You know, one of the concerns that's been voiced to me is special needs children and the services that are provided to them and the support to those parents. And as a professional social worker, you know, I'm aware of, of that in my daily, my daily work. I've worked with them, and I'm aware of many of their challenges. And so I think that in those ways, we can improve.
Okay, all right. So Ish, how much is the budget of the, of the school district?
Currently, it's, well, every year, it changes because of the attendance, but we average around $140 or $150 million a year.
All right, so in that $140, $150 million, how much flexibility is there? If, if the district wanted to do, you know, some Marshall Plan or something to really focus on this, on this pre-K issue? Is there, is there money that's really available that's not being used?
Just, just like with any other organization, especially nonprofits or governmental, 80, 90% of our budget is taken up by salaries, retirement, benefits, Calperson Health Service goes up every year, benefits go up every year. And of course, we wanna make sure that we're paying our teachers and our staff a living wage. So I would say maybe about 10%. But that 10% is also books, supplies for our students, any facilities work. I mean, we have to get imaginative. I mean, we can find the money, but with the pre-K world, you know, we have, obviously, we offer pre-K programs ourselves, but it's also about the partnerships. I can't trust that enough. It's, to think that the district can do everything on its own, I think, is foolhardy. If we're not working as a community, you know, even before pre-Ks, we're very lucky to have the executive director of First Five, Wendy Simpson-Smooton, on our board, and, you know, she's been raising a lot of good questions on, on the dais to see where they can partner, because it doesn't start at kindergarten. You know, when students walk in, and I've seen the research on this, when students walk into school, if they don't get reevaluated for what's called an adverse childhood experience, an ace, you could be letting students just slip through the cracks.
Right.
Any, a student with two or three aces will have something like five to eight by the time they hit sixth grade. That means six to eight different adverse things are happening to that child to affect their ability to grow, to develop socially, to learn.
Okay, let me...
So that's one of the things that, with our, our school district, we are being imaginative with our money, because we've just enacted two contracts, one for the primary schools and one for the secondary schools, for mental services to identify those things.
Let me bring, let me bring Mark into this. So, so Ish says about only 10% of the money in the budget is really available for stuff that you would like to do, innovative enterprising things. How big a priority is this pre-K thing?
Well, it's huge. I got, I have three different areas where I can touch on this. One is that I don't know how hundreds of thousands of immigrant people who have come into the United States that have been successful, successful businessmen, their children have gone on to university and professional jobs, and all we do is we just play the victim, you know? We need to remove, we need to highlight the successes of our immigrant people. There's huge, huge documentary on that. Second thing also too, is we need to have more teachers that reflect our population. We need to recruit teachers and create true affordable housing so we can bring teachers into this community that reflect our student population, so that, so that it's more genuine and it's more meaningful for kids when they come in. That's really, really important. And the last thing is quit calling Santa Barbara paradise. You know, I wrote this article in The Independent, you know, and people, oh, we live in, no, this is our home. You know, and so right away, you do, you create a division, because there's low-income people in our community. We all share...
Lots of poverty.
Yeah, and we, and we shared this during the disasters over the winter. And we showed that that touched every level of society. So we really have to figure out a way externally to create a better environment within our city so that everybody feels welcome and, and can enjoy the fruits of education.
All right. Ish, you're up first on this one. And bylaws say the board shall ensure that the district is responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the community. Now, I wanna ask you in that context about the big controversy earlier this year at San Marcos High School, the demotion of the principal Ed Behrens on a vote of four to one. You were in the majority of that, despite a huge outpouring of community support for him. And I think that level of community support explains in part why we have so many people running. In retrospect, do you think that that decision was a good example of the board being, quote, "responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of the community"?
Yes, at least from, from my view, because I can't talk about anyone else's, for my view, yes, absolutely. Because if we're talking about wanting the best for our students, the best for our schools, the best leadership, the best teachers, then yes, then that's the decision we made. What's popular is not always the best thing, and what's the best thing is not always popular. And that's, and you can point out to tons of different examples on that. Yes, I mean, was it a hard decision? Was it a decision that I wanted to make? Of course not. Nobody ever wants to reassign a principal. Nobody ever wants to take away a popular figurehead from a school. But when it came down to it with the information presented, it was the best for our community as a whole, as a district, including San Marcos.
All right. Mark, when you and I spoke for a piece I wrote, you, you didn't agree with that in, in terms of the way the Behrens situation was handled?
No, well, first of all, you know, this case is still in litigation, so we have to be very careful how we talk about it. Second of all, I think it demonstrated a lack of administrative protocol, administrative capacity and protocol. I've been in government for most of my career, and so there's a thing called progressive discipline. And so if you have issues with an employee, you have to, you have to demonstrate a journey of how you came to a decision. And it's my understanding that there was no documentation or anything formally in this person's...
And that is what, that's one, a big issue in the lawsuits.
Yeah, so, and so, and then people say, well, e- even if you don't have something in the file, or you do have something in the file, it's not always gonna pan out. But at least you have something to go by. And so it's my understanding that there was really nothing to go by other than the incident which created the decision. So I just think that there's a thing called progressive discipline that all governments should, should practice when it comes to their employees.
Yeah. Ish, I know you can't talk about that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Kate. 500 people showed up at this meeting about their principal, Ed Behrens. They had to move it to the auditorium. In your experience, have you seen that many people out?
Never.
And what, what's the message?
Never. And so I would have to disagree with Ish. I don't think that this is about being, making unpopular decisions or doing something that's difficult. I don't know the particulars of it. In fact, no one but the board should know the particulars of a personnel issue. We know that. However, there's a strong belief that the, many members of the board stonewalled the community, and, and that the superintendent was not transparent enough, even in how the decision was made, and that there was a lot of finger pointing and nothing more than that. So I don't think that this, that this issue is over. And what I think it did more than anything is it revealed sort of what, what is at the heart of some of the issues at the district, that the more that people sort of dug in to the issues, they found that there were issues around transparency and issues around accountability, and issues around data collection and building on results, et cetera. So it kind of just opened up the can of worms that led to eight people, I think, running for this office.
Rose, you wanna weigh in on this? San Marcos situation?
Certainly. I think that it could have been handled better, and I agree, you know, that it could have been handled better in hindsight. As a board member, my goal is to be, you know, transparent, to be responsive to the community, to the parents, and to the school personnel. And so in that way, you know, I would be very responsive and, and look at, you know, what could have been handled, what could have been done better, and use it as a lesson in terms of improvement in the future.
Okay, all right. Let me ask a couple of real political questions, and then, and then we'll go to the closing statement. On this Behrens situation, we all know that the parents who were angry ended up forming an ad hoc group, Save Our Schools, SOS. You, Kate, and you, Mark, have been endorsed by them as, as kind of a slate. What did you tell them? What did you promise them in, in, to get that, to get that endorsement?
What we talked about was finding common ground, is how could we unite the district and unite the community around divisive issues? So that was really what I sold them on, was, was my background in the community wanting to find a way so that we could move ahead and move forward versus being stuck down in the weeds around race issues, or stuck down in the weeds around pointing fingers and this and that. I said, how can we get to a point to where we can move forward from the issue? And so that's what, how I became involved and got endorsed with them.
Kate, how'd you get, how'd you get them to back you?
I think...
Get all those lawn signs that are all...
Well, first of all, I just think that many people in that group actually knew my work at Peabody, and knew that I was a fair, but also a risk-taking leader, and that I was honest, forthright, and courageous. And that might sound crazy, but actually, that's what the board needs now, is an educator who knows what the superintendent must do, a person who's been on boards who knows what board members must do, and someone who's not afraid to ask hard questions, do hard work, and, and be accountable. None of these things deter me from wanting to be on the board. And I think this is what they found was appealing about my candidacy and also being a partner to Mark, that together, we're a very powerful one-two punch.
All right, fair enough. Rose, you and Ish, both endorsed by the Democratic Party, and sort of an opposing slate, if you will. What did you promise to do to win that endorsement on behalf of, on behalf of the Democratic Party? And how did that work? How did you get that endorsement?
Certainly, I presented, you know, who I am, as a parent, as a social worker, as a community, you know, involved in the community and volunteer. I work with, you know, many in the Spanish-speaking community as well as many of the students. When, after my children graduated, I stayed involved in the schools. And I was also part of the Equity and Excellence in Education at Dos Pueblos to see how to bring those parents in and how to bring in the community partners to make our schools better for our children, and to, you know, help so that if they want to go to college or they want to learn a vocation, so that how, you know, to help them with that path to success.
So those were, that's what the party was, was interested in?
Yes, uh-huh, yes. And I also have the endorsement of the Cause Action Fund and Planned Parenthood.
All right, we'll get to the endorsement.
Yes.
All right, Ish, a lot of people think, you know, that the, either that, whether it's the Democrats or the Republicans, that having partisan politics enter into what's essentially a non, what, what is legally a nonpartisan job such as this is, is the wrong way to go. What, what do you think? I mean, what, what did you have to promise the Democrats to get the endorsement?
I didn't promise them a thing. I just, you know, told them who I am. I preached to them that I am civic-minded, I care about education, I care about our students, and that I'm gonna continue working hard as I have been for, you know, my entire adult life, my entire adult career, working on education equity, working with parents, making sure that they're part of the conversation, and showing that I, again, I'm willing to stand up for our students and our families, all our populations, but especially looking towards, you know, closing that achievement gap and working with our most vulnerable students, our most vulnerable populations, to make sure that they get a fair shake along with everyone else.
All right. Did you talk to the Democrats?
No.
Did you?
Didn't have a chance.
Didn't have a chance?
No.
Why?
There was, there didn't seem to be a process like the other endorsements, where you get a, a letter saying, hey, you know, here's an interview card, please fill this out, and we'll respond. That didn't occur with the Democratic Party, so...
My understanding is the endorsement took place two days after the primary election. That was way before even filing date.
I read that somewhere. Did you talk to the Save Our Schools people, the SOS people?
Yes, I did. Yes, with the Democratic Party, I asked about their endorsement process and was sent their application to complete. And I was also contacted by the SOS folks and set up, you know, to have coffee with them and learn about their, and asked about their endorsement process. And what I was told was that it was an informal process, and I did not, you know, I was not provided with an application to complete and such.
All right, yeah.
I provided background about my education and my, you know, intent and interest in terms of being on the board.
Yeah, there was no application for SOS, it was just informal.
All right. Ish, did you, yes or no, did you speak to the, to the SOS people? Did you, did you seek their endorsement?
Didn't, didn't speak to them about my endorsement, no. I figured I was a lost child when it comes to getting a endorsement.
There's candor. All right. Well, thank you all. I wish we could go on, but the time's growing short, so I'm gonna ask each of you if you'd like to give a one-minute closing statement, just talk directly to the voters, and then, and then we'll, we'll close up from there. Mark, why don't you lead off?
Okay, well, my name is Mark Alvarado, and I'm running for school board here for Santa Barbara Unified. You know, really, I wanna, I wanna be on the board because I wanna be a voice for the community. I wanna be able to create an environment where people can have an understanding of what's really going on with the board. And currently, we don't have that. You know, when, when you hear the Peabody Stadium was initially budgeted for $12 million, and now it's over $30, $39 million, you know, and nobody's talking about that. And when you look at the achievement gap and the, and the numbers that we just talked about, almost 60% of our kids are not graduating proficiently, nobody's talking about that. 25% of our kids come from monolingual Spanish homes or monolingual speaking themselves. And what are we doing? And not only immersion, but, you know, around bilingual education to help these kids. 52% of our kids are socio-economically disadvantaged. So there's a lot of issues that need to be discussed at the community level. And I really, really wanna represent the Mexicano families in Santa Barbara and create that, that pathway for their kids to be successful, truly, and create more parental engagement.
All right, right on the nose, 60 seconds, Kate.
I'm Kate Ford, and I would say in the last few weeks, a lot of people have asked me, what does a school board do? I've never even voted in a school board election. And there is just this sense that not many people even know the, the role and the importance of the school board. And that has to change, because last week at the board meeting, there were never more than five or six people in the audience. And on that agenda last week was just communities, was the admission guidelines for the academies, the instructional minutes for elementary school, and they addressed the arts, and, and also the district strategic plan and the mission, vision, and core values of the district to be presented by the superintendent. So when I'm a board member, that room will be full of people who are interested in those subjects and completely devoted to trying to get them right. And with the educational experience that I have and the knowledge, I know I can do this, and every kid in Santa Barbara deserves that.
Thank you. Rose?
Hey, I'm Rose Munoz, and I was born and raised here in Santa Barbara. I am of the community and for the community. And as a parent, as a volunteer, as a social worker, I bring strength in terms of collaboration and policies with the school board. I want to bring the school district and make it accessible to all the parents for the benefit of all the students so that we can have, close the achievement gap and make improvements in that. I will be very accessible, and I'm very accountable, and I bring my strength in terms of planning how to best meet the students' needs. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your endorsement.
Thanks. Ish, 60 seconds.
So what I can promise our, our viewing audience and our constituency is that I'm gonna keep bringing the experience that I've had working in education for the last ten years, the last year and a half of my work as a board member, to make sure that our students continue getting a better shape than they have been. And absolutely, the educational achievement gap is definitely a big concern. I don't know if folks know, but of the 60% of Latino... I don't know if folks know, but of the 60% of Latinos who actually do graduate, 30% are actually eligible to apply for UC or CSU college. That's something that I've been prioritizing. I want to make sure that our graduation, our graduates, when they get that diploma, it's not just a certificate completion. It is something that is a gold standard that shows to everyone around that they are capable and they are ready to start college, they are capable and ready to start a career. And that is what I'm going to keep pushing for, and I'm also going to keep pushing to make sure that our community feels welcomed into our board meetings, into our schools, even more importantly, so that there is no disconnect between parents and students, parents and teachers, parents and administrators, and parents and the board. Because it is the community that we need to make, make sure these students are successful.
All right. Okay, well, we're going to leave it there. And on behalf of Newsmakers and the folks at TDSB and the voters of Santa Barbara, let me express my appreciation to all of our candidates. Thank you for being here tonight, and more importantly, for the commitment and the passion and the courage that you all display by putting yourself forward as candidates, which is not an easy thing.
Thank you.
Thanks to Mark Alvarado.
Gracias.
Kate Ford.
Thank you.
Rose Munoz. And Ismael Uyai, excuse me. And special thanks to our peerless director, JP Montalvo, to our crew, Ryan, Michael, Lizzie, and Ken, and as always, our top-ranking, high-powered, high-energy senior executive producer, Hafreun. Thank you very much for watching. We'll see you next time on Newsmakers.